Meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, October 7th, 2024. It's a little after 7:30 PM now. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. DeDeeche.
Yeah.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Snakes, our board engineer, Mr. Canciano, and our board attorney, Mr. Steinle.
All right, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Americans, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this board on a subject not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We had a couple of resolutions to do, but I understand that the attorney for the applicant in those cases has asked for a delay so they could do further review. All right, fine. We are going to call application number 24:522, the District of 1515 Urban Renewal LLC, 1515 Route 10, Block 200, lots 1.4, 1.05, and 1.06. Preliminary and final major site plan with C variance for two permanent outdoor structures and signage. We've had some discussions about the fact that certain details are still under discussion and negotiation, so if we go through this. The question of completeness was raised.
So if we could have the applicant's attorney, there's just a question about the tax payments that have been, they're under negotiation, but they haven't been certified by the collector.
Nicole Madsiak, for the record of the law firm, Day Pitney, here this evening on behalf of the applicant. There is a tax appeal pending on the property, and we are in negotiations with the township on that item. We have most recently submitted an offer, counteroffer? Yeah, an offer which has been submitted to the township attorney and is currently under review by the township.
All right, so we're contemplating the possibility, just to make sure that there are no problems with any Ts that aren't crossed and Is dotted, of if we agree to grant this, we may very well simply direct the attorney to draw up a resolution and that we would actually grant it once the memorializing resolution is in place. Is that satisfactory?
Related to the tax appeal?
So the tax payments on the property, have they been made? Their current?
Yes, the taxes are current, correct.
But you're under, but there's a tax appeal pending?
Correct, which is unrelated to.
That's separate, okay.
All right, I thought that there were outstanding tax payments to be made, which would impact completeness, okay.
Correct, yes. I understand the difference, and you're correct. There are no taxes outstanding, so if we were to file with the tax collector for a tax rate certification that all taxes are current, they are current. There is just separately a tax appeal that has been filed on the property that's pending.
Okay, very good. All right, well, then, your case.
Thank you very much. So as was stated, we are here this evening in relation to the property that was formerly known as 1515 Route 10. It's Block 200, lots 1.04, 1.05, and 1.06. The board may recall that this property previously received preliminary and final major site plan approval, C variances, preliminary and final major subdivision, which is how the lots exist in their current condition today, and also a major soil movement permit from this board by resolution adopted on September 13th, 2021, to construct a mixed-use commercial development which consists of three buildings, which are identified as Buildings A, B, and C. Buildings A and B are currently under construction. We actually had an inspection on Building A of 26 of the units so far, so that particular building is pretty far along and is anticipated to be opening at the end of the year. We're not proposing any changes to Building A here this evening. Building B is currently under construction. That building is a mixed-use building, so the first ground floor is retail and restaurant space, and above that is apartments. There's also the parking deck as part of that building. We're not proposing any changes to Building B either this evening, so those two buildings are currently under construction under permits that were issued by your building department consistent with that 2021 approval. We are seeking modifications to Building C, which is an entirely commercial building, one-story building which will front on Route 10. So that building is not yet under construction, so if you drive by the site, you wouldn't see anything in that location currently. The modifications that we're proposing are limited to the outside of Building C. There are two restaurants that are part of Building C, which are larger restaurants that will have liquor licenses, and we previously had approval for designated outdoor seating for each of those restaurants. We are proposing to create or construct, attach to the building, a covering, that's a permanent covering over that outdoor seating, so it'll provide some shade and just extend the ability to use that in a comfortable way. Each of the restaurant tenants that we anticipate being here have requested that permanent covering instead of umbrellas at tables or some other temporary condition. We're also proposing additional signage on the internal side of the building, and you'll see it in our plans as our engineer goes through this. There's an internal woo-nurf, it's called, so it's this community activated space in between Buildings B and C. We are permitted to have signage on that side of the building, but we're only permitted one sign per use. We are seeking a variance to permit a second sign, which is a logo sign, so some of our tenants have asked if they could have a logo in addition to the words of their actual business, so that would be two signs, not one, so we're seeking variance really for that. And then on the, what is actually the backside of the building but faces Route 10, so you would traditionally think of it as the front of the building as you're driving by, we're allowed certain signage, but we're proposing wall signs that are larger than what's permitted to be consistent with the woo-nurf side of the building and to just provide visibility for those tenants from Route 10. So our experts this evening will run through the details of what we are proposing, but at the core of it, it's those two items, so one is the outdoor coverings and two is the signage on Building C. We're also seeking, I don't think it was mentioned in the beginning, a conditional use approval for the restaurant spaces. It's actually a conditional use in the redevelopment plan, and it requires us as a condition to confirm that the shared parking works, so we do have our traffic expert here also this evening to just run through how the shared parking numbers work and to confirm that it complies. So we have four witnesses with us this evening, our engineer, our architect, our traffic engineer, and our planner, and we'd like to start with our engineer.
We have a few waivers to discuss first. Mr. Snakes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed Snakes, professional planner. Regarding the waivers, we had identified four, I believe, on our memorandum of August 27, 2024. The first one was wetlands, a letter of interpretation, the waivers requested. We recommend that due to the nature of this application, it didn't seem to be pertinent to the proceedings tonight. Highlands exemption determination. It was determined to be exempt because of the amount of coverage. There really isn't an increase in coverage being proposed. Traffic study, where required by the board. Note, traffic study has been submitted, but we offer to the board that the testimony events, what I think the applicant's getting ready to provide as well. Environmental assessment study, and again, due to the nature of the application, we felt that that was appropriate for the board to consider as well. So those four items are listed for the waivers.
All right, do I hear a motion approving the waivers as suggested in the Burgess Report of, what's that date?
August 27.
August 27?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mealy?
A motion to approve the waivers as delineated by Mr. Snakes.
Do I have a second?
Second, DeDeeche.
Mr. DeDeeche, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, the other thing I noted in our report, depending upon how you feel, is that we identified that due to the permanent nature of the shade structure, and it now reduces the distance between Building, I guess that's Building C and Building B.
B, yeah.
And so you're seeking that as well, just for the board's information. We always had a dimension in there for that woo-nurf area that had at least to be, minimally to be 80 feet wide, and right now with that new shade structure, the tightest dimension would be 60 feet. And that's something I just wanted to point out to the applicant to see if they had a question on that before they get started, but it seems that you'll be covering that.
Yes, we will be covering that. Both our engineer, architect, and planner are all prepared to review that, and we also have the calculations done to show that the overall area that's not unobstructed, because now we're going to have this covering, but the overall area still meets what was required by the redevelopment plan.
Excellent, thank you.
So with that, we'd like to call our engineer as our first witness.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give of we the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Eric Schwarz, S.C.H.W.A.R.Z., with Langen Engineering, our headquarters address here in Parsippany, 300 Kimball Drive.
Okay. Eric, can you please provide your background and experience for the board?
Sure, thank you. So again, my name's Eric Schwarz. I'm a senior principal here with Langen Engineering Environmental Services. I have a BS in civil engineering from the University of Delaware that I got in the early 1990s, with 31 years of continuous professional experience in engineering consulting business. I'm a licensed professional engineer here in New Jersey, as well as in 10 other states. New Jersey over 20 years now as a licensed and professional engineer, and I have been accepted as an expert before numerous boards in New Jersey, including this one as I was here, I guess I was on the screen a couple of years ago, when we were doing it that way.
We'd like to offer Mr. Schwarz as an expert in civil engineering.
Is there any questions on Mr. Schwarz's background? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have some remarks to run through. I'm going to do a very brief overview of the project again, just as a refresher, and then get into the specifics of the application tonight. Is it okay if I stand over by the board? Testing. Our first exhibit here, which we can mark as A1, on the left is some recent aerial photography of the project site, shows what's in construction on four different angles of view, and the center image is a top-down aerial. So as described by the applicant's attorney a little bit ago, you can see the project is well under construction, especially those first two out of the three buildings.
And that was prepared by your office?
Yes, so they were, I guess, drone footage from the development team, and we prepared the exhibit.
And we'll just give it today's date, October 7.
Eric, can you please also mark it as A1 on the sheet? I know we have this sticky note, but just.
That's what I have up top now.
Great, thanks.
So A1, October 7th, 2024. And actually, I'm going to go right to the second exhibit, which is on the board on the right here, which is a drawing out of the site plan, engineering drawings, sheet number 16 out of 88 entitled "Overall Site Plan," so if I can mark that as A2.
And this was prepared by your office, correct?
Correct.
And the date of the sheet, just today's date?
So this is the exact plan that is in the application package, which was originally dated February 23rd, 2021, and last revised July 9th, 2024.
Thank you.
So again, there's an overview. As an overview of the project, we're fronted on Route 10. We have three main buildings of the project here in Parsippany. There's a fourth building shown on the bottom, which is a proposed hotel that is in the township of Hannover, so not specific to our application here tonight. Building A, again, is a residential building here on this side. Building B, the mixed-use building with both residential units as well as retail and restaurant use, and the parking garage. And then Building C is the smaller, narrower building closest to Route 10 on the top. The overall project is approximately 11 acres, identified as Block 200, lots 1.04, 1.05, and 1.06. We can note that since construction has begun, significant infrastructure improvements have been made, including over 3,000 feet of new potable water line and a significant roadway connection with this roundabout circle that connects project site to the driving wave ramp and improves traffic circulation, both for the project as well as the overall surrounding community. The total units for the project are 498 residential units and just over 56,000 square feet of usable retail and restaurant area. Again, the retail and restaurants are between Buildings B and C, residential units are between Buildings A and B. The unique component about the project that goes all the way back to the redevelopment plan is the area called the woo-nurf, which is this rectangular area in between Building C and Building B, and that's really part of the focus area of where we're going to be talking tonight. And that woo-nurf area is also known as a living street. It's an area pedestrian as well as vehicular activity, and really viewed as the shared outdoor open area of the project where both residents and the public will interact. Now I'm going to go to a third exhibit, which should be in a large view. Title of the sheet is, and again, this is a drawing that is in the site plan submission set that you have. Title of the sheet is "Partial Site Plan Phase 2B." Original date, February 23rd, 2021, last revised on July 9th, 2024. So, and we will mark this as A3, with the 10/7/24 date marked on top. So again, now a blow-up view of the three buildings, and what's highlighted in blue are these two canopy areas, covered outdoor dining area that we're talking about. So the woo-nurf, and I'm going to get into more detail next on the next drawing, is really this rectangular area that's in between the two buildings and extends all the way here to Building A. So these two, there's a restaurant here in Building C and another restaurant here in Building C, sizable finer dining restaurants that will have this outdoor reserved outdoor dining area with the covered canopies. Okay, yeah, I want to actually go to the next exhibit and start to address some of the questions and comments that were in the township planner's letter and then the township engineer's letters. So I'm going to have two up at this time, two exhibits as a bit of a comparison. So again, drawings prepared by our office. The one on the left is going to be A4, and it's titled "Outdoor Dining Plan 2021," meaning what the site plan looked like on the approved set of drawings that we had three years ago that were submitted in 2021. And then the comparison will be the second sheet titled "Outdoor Dining Plan 2024," which is a mock-up of the current plan, where we can describe the differences. So I'm going to mark this one A5.
Do we have those?
We're going, you did not have these yet. We will be leaving these tonight for the session. The base drawing under here you do have as part of the landscape plans, and it was a good example of what we could use to colorize and help explain what we're doing here and requesting tonight. The green shading is what's considered the shared outdoor open area. By the redevelopment plan, it was required to be at least 80 feet wide by 400 feet long. What we actually proposed and were approved with was longer than that, more area, instead of just 32,000 square feet, it's upwards 43,219 square feet, because it happens to be a full 530 feet long, not just 400 feet long. And it was approximately 80, it was really about 81 and a half feet wide, building to building. The areas shown in blue were what was predicted at that time before we had our restaurant tenants to be the outdoor dining for these two restaurants. So we had 787 square feet and 742 square feet, identified as reserved area. These are areas that are a little more secure, they're liquor licensed restaurants, so we call them, it's reserved dining. As opposed to the other areas that are red and are unreserved, and those aren't specific for dining, there are tables and there are chairs, anybody can come up, anybody from the public, anybody from the residents that live there, come down with their laptop computer to sit outside or bring their own lunch from, you know, with them. As opposed to again, right, the blue, specific, reserved, the way it's written in the redevelopment plan, the reserved outdoor dining, there's a limitation on how much of that can be within the shared outdoor open area. We fall well with underneath that requirement. As a comparison now, with the current plan, we have 1,163 square feet on the westernmost restaurant for the, that'll be covered canopy, and 1,070 covered canopy, and you can see we still have a lot of unreserved, open to the public, red outdoor dining and other areas. Again, the length of the green shade from end to end is still 530 feet. As Mr. Snakes pointed out earlier, we have a reduction in the width where the canopies are, right, physical permanent canopy over top of this outdoor dining. Instead of being 81 feet wide here, we shrink to about 58 at the smallest point, you know, you can see there's a curve on these canopies. Now what's interesting is even with the size, if we take the first 150 feet to the left side and 52 feet in between the two, and another 210 feet on the right side, we still have actually 410 total feet of the full 80-foot wide. Redevelopment plan does say the 80 by 400 is to be contiguous, so that's why we're here explaining the difference. So we actually still yield more total area and more total length than what was required for the 80-foot width, it's just that it's broken up by these two canopy structures. So it's been identified in the planner's letter as something that needs variance. A few more numbers I want to read for the record. Right, so outdoor, the reserved outdoor dining area, which is shown in blue again, we're allowed up to 20% of the green area for the original 80 by 400 foot length, up to 20% of that is allowed to be reserved for outdoor dining. We're far less than that, we're at 6.7%. That would be, if I add these two blue areas together, it's 2,223 square feet out of the remaining green shared outdoor open area would be again 6.7%, so well underneath the limit that's allowed. One other point that I wanted to make, and we addressed these calculations in a response letter that was, it was September 17th. A response letter.
Yes, September 17th, 2024.
September 17th, 2024, we put these calculations into a letter to the board secretary in response to the Burgess Review Letter. With respect to outdoor seating and relating to parking, the redevelopment plan allows for the outdoor seats to be, as long as they are no more than 30% of the indoor seats or seating area, then no further parking is required for the addition of those seats, and we are well underneath that 30% in those calculations. We're also submitted in the September 17th letter. I think I'm going to go to our next exhibit, which is... This will be Exhibit A6. Plan is titled "Bulk Requirements Plan." It is part of the submitted application, sheet number 27 of 88, originally dated February 23rd, 2021, and revised on July 9th, 2024. Again, that'll be A6, 10/7/2024. This drawing really totals up all the data, all the site data, requirements from redevelopment zone, parking counts, and calculations such as building coverage and impervious coverage. And one of the comments in the Burgess review letter asked for testimony that whether or not the changes were increasing, were making modification to the building coverage and/or impervious coverage, so we want to get that on the record here tonight. And in looking at it, again, we had noticed a couple very minor changes in the calculations that are of no consequence, we're still way under the limits that are allowed, we're talking about portions of a percentage, but we did notice that with the building coverage, the approved plan in 2021 had 254,707 square feet, and the new plan has 257,100 square feet. So that's an increase of 2,393 square feet. 2,233 of the square feet come from those canopies, right, there's extra building coverage because it's roof. There's another 160 square feet that just came out of the evolution of the architectural plans, since we did the site plan approval, as they do the fine details in the architectural plans, the building footprint changed by inches here and there, and it added 160 square feet. So that's memorialized with the changes in the drawings. We had one mistake in our calculation, which was calling out the tract coverage, total tract area that we started with of 11.24 acres, that should have been 11.14 type of a tenth of an acre. The end result is building coverage is 52.98%, where we're allowed to go up to 55, so we're still over 2% lower than what the allowable is with the proposed canopies. Similarly, we had a similar error with the impervious coverage. The 11.24 acres instead of 11.14 acres was identified, and the plan we submitted had 404, I'm sorry, 40554 square feet of impervious area on the tract. It should have been slightly higher at 40656. The result is impervious coverage on the original 2021 plan that was approved was 82.54%. We're up 200ths of a percent now, we're at 82.56%. We're allowed to go up to 85%, so we're still comfortable, more or less, 2 and 1/2% underneath Township engineer issued a review letter dated September 18th, 2024, with a couple of points to be addressed. One of them dealt with a storm pipe, which was positioned more or less here, coming out of the center, south side of Building C. It picks up the roof drains off of the building, and our revised plan submitted this year reduced that 12-inch pipe to a half a percent slope, where the original design three years ago was a 1% slope. Less slope in the pipe, less pipe capacity. Engineer wanted us to submit calculations to justify and prove that that was still sufficient. As a result, we looked back at it and decided there was no reason to drop it to a half, we want to go back to the original 1%. We have plenty of cover, there's no need, so we're going to push that back. And that will be submitted on a set of resolution compliance plans for the final review and approval by the engineer. There was another question relating to lighting under the canopies. Since the canopies are there, the outdoor site lighting could then be blocked, and we fully expect the restaurant tenants, when they apply for their building permits, to also have lighting underneath the canopies right over top of the seating, so that would come then. That is the end of what I formally wanted to talk about. I can take questions now or later.
Eric, if we can just identify one more of the township planner review comments, just because I think we've gone through most of them that relate to engineering. There's also a comment about additional planting of evergreen shrubs to screen the proposed transformers along Route 10. We had previously proposed two transformers, if you can point those out, which are now consolidated into one location instead of separated. If we can just point that out on the plan.
So I'm back on Exhibit A3, and right up here along Route 10, between So I'm back on exhibit A3, and right up here along Route 10, between Building C and Route 10, you see there are two transformers. They were always along Route 10. The original application a few years ago, 2021, had them further separated. There was one in this vicinity and one in this vicinity. The idea originally was that two halves of this Building C were going to get their own separate feed. The architecture advanced in coordination with PSENG, I'm sorry, JCPL, in this case, came along, it was determined that all the feed would be coming into the one end of the building, so both transformers were revised and put together. So that's why they're roughly right next to each other here. The part of the comment had to do with landscaping and coverage from Route 10. Similar to what the application was last time, we're really providing the same thing again, and you don't necessarily see it in two dimensions, but in the landscape drawings there are details that show some grading that comes up from Route 10 to behind the transformers. There's a small retaining wall of so many feet high, positioned around them, the earth comes up behind that, and then there's plantings behind those as well. So from the road, you're seeing, you're seeing land coming up with plantings on top, transformers really down behind it, and just as it was the first time, it just used to be two separate ones, and now it's two together. So we think that was probably misunderstood a little bit in the review of the plans.
And Mr. Snikus, if you still feel that additional planting is necessary, we're happy to work that out with you if you wanted to come to the site and see that after it's installed.
Certainly, I'll take a look further at that detail. I didn't realize that it was going to be walled in order to be screened as well. That's one thing I'll just take a look at.
Mr. Cantiano, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted a couple more comments. So, I asked for the, I know the architects' plans and landscape architects' plans were clouded, you can see the revision, these are very extensive plans. It was hard to see what you changed, and I actually did like a look back at the 2021 approval plans versus these plans. And if you could comment, I'm guessing they were not brought up in the application or in your testimony now, but there are some change, no change in parking number, but you've changed parking on the lower, on the bottom of Building A, you've added EV state parking there, you also have some transformers in the back of Building and generator in the back of Building B, and I also noticed that you have a reconfiguration of the trash compactor area adjacent to Building B. Could you comment on what other site change? Now, you testified there's no changes to the buildings, but what site changes have changed since the last approval?
I think you hit on probably every one of them just now. And back to the buildings, I did state earlier, there was slight change, I mean, right, the 160 total square feet of building footprint.
Not on Building C?
No, that was a combination on multiple buildings. There's a little bit there, a little bit there, it's architectural footprint changes happened all over. If we can get that as a cloud, you hate to, as an engineer, you hate to cloud the whole drawing, right?
No, exactly, that's my point. It loses its purpose if you cloud the whole drawing, but particularly as it really relates to site plan improvements, I'd be interested. Now, could you just comment, were those EV changes, the generator change, and the trash compactor change, was that administratively submitted and approved, or do you need approval for those changes? What's the status of that?
Right, so the trash compactor that you're speaking of is over here on the right side, right, to the west side of Building B. It was a configuration change, same general spot where it is, just reconfigured a little bit. And I will note, we did not lose a single parking place from the original. I think the number is 1,062 is our total parking on the project, between surface and garage. We still have the same total number of spaces. We did go through administrative approval, right, right, for the trash, the change in trash configuration.
I issued a permit and revised for the changes at the bottom. I couldn't remember doing the EV though. Do you remember Ed and I reviewed the changes administratively? I should have brought the permits with me, but I don't remember making changes at all to the EV.
Our architect can, the EV behind Building A?
Yeah.
Our architect can address that, that was part of the initial 2021 plan, so you wouldn't have seen it as a change.
That's why I'm not familiar, okay.
Well, it wasn't called out on the 2021 plan, that's why I noticed it.
The addition of, okay, so, correct, civil drawings did not show the electric vehicle spaces. They were always in mind, they just weren't perfected on exactly what they were going to be, as I recall. I suppose when you hear from the architect, I'll let him speak to his plans. But you are correct identifying this now does show electric vehicles, parking spaces on the surface here, on the south side of Building A. We also have a view shown over here in the, call it the western side of Building C, and there's also spaces proposed inside the garage.
And just so you can provide, has there been any change to parking count or any reduction in parking?
Zero, same number of total spaces. I think what we do with the resolution compliance set is give you line by line, every little thing that we can find that changed, very subtle things, where a drainage inlet maybe moved five feet from a conflict or so. I'm pointing into the middle here because I know there was one inside of here where there's a conflict with something coming from the building. No slope changes, no changes in capacity physically moving the inlet during construction, five feet from a conflict that came about.
That was really the...
I think there's some landscape related items in the room here where they've changed and reconfigured some stuff there.
Yeah, they're just shown on the landscape plan, that's fine. So just for the clouding, it's really just what your improvements are, the major improvements, not a drainage slope change of 1%. But your canopy and, I guess, the...
The EVs and even the trash here, even though it's approved already, it's a change in the old plans.
That would be helpful.
Yep, you can do that.
Thank you.
Other members of the board have questions, Mr. Neely?
What would be the operating hours of the restaurant?
That's not for me to, perhaps another witness, I don't know that one.
Thank you.
Other question, Mr. De Palatano?
Thank you. The parking south of Building A, those have numbers on them?
No, they don't.
So then who parks there?
Well, predominantly it's going to be residents that live in Building A, but they're not restricted.
Okay, so someone wants to go to restaurants can park in those spots?
They could, I would personally, my personal opinion is it'd be pretty unlikely, knowing what's available inside the garage with a short...
They can also go in the garage as well?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and then how about, I see if you look on the west side here, coming down, I guess that's West District Drive?
That would be here, correct.
Going down, further down, you can head to the end, you can take a right turn there, you can get in the other parking lot?
Yes, to the end of District Drive is a connection.
But you, that's not your property though, right?
That is correct, but the joint properties, so I'm flipping back to exhibit A2, the overall site plan, come down West District Drive, you can make a left into our project, you can also make a right into here.
So will you think people are going to park on that area?
Well, that...
I know I would. That's a good spot there, flip around. But can they walk safely across, is there a crosswalk there?
There is, so we've actually, and that wasn't designed for people coming to use this property, it was really designed as an interconnectivity with an office building next door. Office building, they have a very clear crosswalk running through their parking lot that we then lined up with a ramp, because it's a higher elevation. There's a, an ADA accessible ramp that brings you down, and a crosswalk across the street and your sidewalks all the way, so the idea being that lunch, ten minutes, you can go over there at lunch.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, quick question, yeah. One thing was not really clear to me, the proposed change, the canopy, that's not enclosed on the other three sides, right, on the sides?
The canopy, so it has a, I'll call it roughly waist-high wall, as intended, so those are liquor licensed restaurants, you know? The operators need a bit of security to control, right, the usage as well. So, as I understand the design today, the intent is that it's roughly a waist-high wall, and it's really open, and a rooftop coverage. So it's not a conditioned, full, enclosed building.
Okay, not a, like a hall, closed hall kind of thing, it's open, okay. And then, which also means there must be entrance and exits within that, right, yeah?
Yeah, it probably shows better on the architectural plan.
Okay, so we'll overlook on that.
For the architect, yep.
Other, Mr. Math?
So just, you may have already said this, but the outdoor dining areas, the blue ones, the size of them is the exact same as the 2021 plan, correct? It's just there's now a permanent fixed structure over there?
No, they're actually a bit increased, but still well within the limit.
Okay.
So, they were roughly 742 and 787 square feet, now it's slightly over 1,163 here. Still less than half.
But there was other areas that were not designated before, weren't there? Or is there...
Well, they were designated with, we'll call it that waist-high wall, if you will, a bit of a corral around it, but they weren't designated with a permanent canopy structure. The idea then wasn't known for sure what would be right for the tenants, but it was proposed to be reserved dining.
Okay.
And likely to have some kind of umbrella or temporary canopy that could be put up with a permit once a year.
Okay.
Not once a year, but annually.
And maybe this is a question for the traffic engineer, but the change in restaurant versus retail, did that, I understand that the number of parking spaces doesn't change, but did the parking demand or the parking requirement change?
Yes, so there's a, that is, will be best for the traffic engineer, but in short, we still fall underneath the allowable. The shared parking calculation comes out to where it results in less than, less parking required than what we are providing. But again, traffic engineer can go through that in more detail.
And from a traffic perspective in terms of space, that was retail now being restaurant, does it change the trip generation, and he can speak to that as well?
Yeah, I figured I'd ask him that, but, no, I was more interested in, does it change the, like, parking requirement? That was the main question. Does it create a new variance, I guess? Okay.
No.
Other members of the board have questions? Mr. Snikus, you have one?
Yeah, just some quick follow-ups regarding the seasonal outdoor dining restriction, that's not something we're discussing today, right?
Correct.
I just informed the board that we're not covering that tonight. And then also loudspeaker, you're still pursuing the use of a loudspeaker outside in the outdoor dining area?
We anticipate that the restaurants will want to have some kind of light music playing. We also think that that's something that would be discussed with the council in connection with the outdoor dining requirements that are in a separate ordinance section.
Very good, thank you.
So we're not discussing this, then?
We're still discussing the two permanent outdoor dining areas with regard to the outdoor dining structures themselves, but not necessarily for the time of year operation. That is something that was now, it's only the purview of the government body, that's in the industry.
So then, here's my question, then, Ed, with regards to permanent outdoor dining, I don't have an issue with outdoor dining, but what does the permanent outdoor dining do for other areas in the township? Because some areas in the township or per se, they aren't conducive for outdoor dining. So would something like this make that part of it, set of precedents? And that's not what I want to see happen.
I would say it's, it can be specific to a specific location, and that what you have here is a context of a development that's enclosed, it's within its own realm, and what they're proposing for is permanent outdoor dining, is a structure, not necessarily the time of year usage. That would still have to be discussed with the government.
The government, right.
So, and I know the original intention, somewhat, some of the intentions of the yearly renewal of that is to make sure that you don't have any bad players, or people who aren't abiding by the rules as to whether it's loudspeakers, music, things of that nature, or time of day, time of operation. And so that was, I believe, one of the original intents of that time frame. So I think that's something, that's why we're saying that this can't be really reviewed by this board, it would really be an appeal to the governing body for that specific condition.
And we didn't, the clerk's office and the zoning department did not use that ordinance to anyone who was an applicant that was approved by the board in the past for outdoor dining. So when they send me the review and ask me to review whether outdoor dining is permitted, they do not send me applications that have been approved by the board for outdoor dining. So any restaurant in the town that has outdoor dining that was part of their application does not go back to the zoning department and the clerk's office for yearly approval. It is only the shopping centers that have a pizzeria who wants to put 12 seats outside and some tables, those are reviewed yearly, because like the mayor said, those, sometimes those outdoor seating are not appropriate and they don't have the rooms, so those we review yearly. But anyone who's been a board application and the board approved outdoor dining does not, so make sure that when you explain it to the council, they understand that this, that the zoning department does not review any of the outdoor dining that's approved by the board. Those are just the shopping center restaurants who want to try to put seating outside or on the lawn that might not be appropriate or safe. It's not applications where the board has approved outdoor dining. So I know there was a lot of confusion on that, we kind of...
Yep, and in this instance, the board has jurisdiction to discuss the permanent structure for outdoor dining, but the board isn't going to be taking action as to whether the applicant can actually operate outdoor dining year-round. They're going to discuss that with the township separately.
Okay, I'd always, I'd always believed frankly that something like this was, was application specific, that it would not be something that really would set a precedent for other, because this is such a major project, that it strikes me that it would be perfectly reasonable to have it here and yet not have that be setting as a precedent elsewhere.
That's my point, I did, that's not what I want, you know, I want from day one, when it was discussed in my office, this is not what we wanted, set of precedents.
Right. But it's useful to know that the council is going to have the final word on a lot of the dining infrastructure.
Because you saw, I mean, what happened during COVID, parking lots became an area of dining, and a lot of our zoning laws were ignored, and some are still being ignored. So I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't affect that.
All right, I'd hope that the fact that we are giving them specific relief for this, I'd speak to that, that you would have to get specific relief to have anything like this. So. All right, any other questions by members of the boards?
Just Mr. De Palatano? Thank you again. So, the, right there, the 118 square feet and 77 square feet?
Yes.
Is that for people in the restaurant on that corner?
So, the, again, the ones in the red are not dedicated reserved spaces. It happened to be next to restaurants, but they're not corralled in. You, me, anyone else can show up there and sit there.
That's those, those three smaller ones?
These ones on the end, as well as all of these in the red.
All those too. Are those restaurants over there also?
There are restaurants on the other side too, but again, those are not...
Okay, so they're not, not just for them?
Not reserved just for them, anybody can go.
All right, thank you.
Any questions by members of the public of these, this witness or this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you, our next witness is our architect.
If you please raise your right hand, you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Yes, Keith Peacock, K-E-I-T-H-P-E-A-C-O-C-K. Address is 756 Haddon Avenue, Collinswood, New Jersey.
Mr. Peacock, can you please provide the board with your experience and education?
Sure. I'm a principal with Thriven Design, we're the architects of record for the project. Have a bachelor's of science in architecture from Druxel University, been licensed here in New Jersey for 10 years, 11 years, licensed in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Virginia, Maryland, and DC. I've presented in front of boards in Jersey City, this board obviously several years back when we did this, also Camden, Wildwood, New Brunswick, a number of times, so.
And you were previously accepted as an expert in the field of architecture by this board, correct?
By this board as well, yes.
We'd like to offer Mr. Peacock as an expert in architecture.
Any questions on the witnesses' qualifications? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you.
Also stand up.
So Mr. Peacock is going to walk us through the architectural floor plans and also some elevations that depict the proposed.
Correct, correct. So, I guess I'll just jump back to the question about EVs, as we, well, we'll talk about, we have Building A, we have Building B, and we have Building C, as we talked about in the room up here, we have...
We have to mark the presentation.
A7.
A7. And this was prepared by your office, correct?
It was, this is the same plan that we had in the packet with the exception of we changed the nomenclature of one of these spaces, it's just... It's just, it's a retail space that we had a different nomenclature before. The square feet is the same, we just changed what we leveled it on the plan. But the plan is again, it's something about what was in your, in your packet other than that, that one change.
And what's the date on the plan?
This one is actually dated today, but it was actually a copy from what we had previously. Okay. So we have Delta Dento, Route 10 outside, and our main axis coming in. So our original application had EV charging. We had noted here, we had power brought out to this corner for EV charging, but we hadn't actually delineated the spaces for the EV. We also had EV charging in the garage at, in the original submission. Through this process of working through the final designs, we're also increasing the number of EV charging spaces by 15 spaces. Some are in the garage and we have three that we put out here by building C as well to add more potential for EV charging. So one of the questions about parking, just to refresh the board, when we presented this before, there's the ground floor and the first three floors of the building, first two floors of the building and the lower level are all open parking for anyone to come to the property and can park here. We have a, when you come in and park, there's a walkway between, between the buildings as, I can't really see in this, I'll show you in a minute. But there's a connection path from the garage straight out to the woo nerf to all of those retail spaces. So you can park in the garage and you can, you can come right in here. Parking in these other spaces around the back of building A is probably going to be, one, people that don't know the space to come here and find that parking is probably not, not something that they're going to do. They're going to, they're going to use the parking deck that has signage that drives them to those, those spaces. See some other things that we have here. Let's see. So just talking about the plan, one of the things that we've also done in this is that the redevelopment plan had in there for a breakup of the building at certain distances and having a certain degree of notch back. One of the things we've done is we've pulled this breezeway between the two halves of building C, where there's parking on the other side, we have a breezeway through there that brings you to the woo nerf. We've brought that can, that overhead canopy back to, again, to facilitate this, this thing that there's a building here and there's a building here and it doesn't feel like it's one, one long mass of a building across the space. So these are the canopy areas in, on the front here, that we have the seating area, and these are these blade airplane wings, if you will, that come out from the building. The facade of the building is really here and these things just project out. And I'll show you some renders here in a minute that emphasize that. So as Eric had pointed out, with a couple of minor changes in square feet, so we did have about a total of 160 square feet as we, we worked through the buildings. Originally, we had electrical on both ends of the building and as we revise this now, we have water service coming into one side with sprinkler coverage and we have electrical service coming in the other side. And this breezeway roof allows us to service across the building with sprinkler coverage, water coverage, and also the electric to go back and forth. So simplified it, I worked with JCPL. They thought this was a better scenario. So we did that. In the back here, part of those transformer changes that happened here was when you looked at the amount of electrical connections we had to do, we had to bring in a transfer box that, it's a, you can only have so many lugs on a transformer. And we had many more cables that had to come in for the retail spaces as well as for the residential. So we have a splice box and then we have a transformer. So this back configuration had to get modified to work with JCPL and their requirements for these splice boxes where all of these, you know, probably 40 cables have to come into this thing and you only have a handful that can actually go to a transformer after that. So that was the driving of that, that reconfiguration. And then there were some minor adjustments to the trash compactor here on the west side to make all of that get adjusted correctly. So that's really the extent of the plan. Let's go to, we'll call this A8. So these are the same elevations that we had on the, on the packet you have with you. I just put them onto a board and enlarged them a little bit here for viewability here in the, in the meeting. So the, as you can see, the elevations are a slight difference from what we presented back in 2021 as we modified through things and worked out tenant needs for, for the major tenants. Evolution of the facade modified here and there, but primarily it's the same in terms of the two halves and how things were set up across all the elevations. So just some minor things with the fenestration and doors, things here and there, but the overall essence of the elevations remained as what was presented and approved in 2021.
And could you just provide the date of that board?
They're all dated today.
Today.
But again, these were the elevations that were part of the packet, so there's no difference to these from what we actually had in the packet, which is enlarged for viewability. A9. And again, this is the same information that's in the packet on the signage sheet, but we've just enlarged it again to make it viewability here, but just, you know, trying to point out that we have identification on each of the buildings, doorway signs that come in, we have the parking that directs people when they come to the parking deck, they know where in and out is and all of those. We have signs that tell you for when you're on the woo nerf, coming back into the parking deck that identifies where, where that happens. And then just a typical configuration of a tenant sign. We don't know what their logos are going to be. We don't know what their signs are going to say just yet. We don't have all those tenants in, in place. So we've outlined in our permits that, and with our statistics that we've worked out, that we're in compliance on the woo nerf side of, of the building with the exception as we'd like to add these larger logos, which I'll show you in the render here in a minute. And then to do the same thing on Route 10 side so that as folks are driving down Route 10, the tenants have visibility on the street, which is important to draw in traffic to their, either the restaurant or to their stores that they, they have there. Now we get to the fun stuff. We'll call this A8. So these are a couple of artist impressions of what this will look like from the woo nerf, and we had the same views we had presented previously on this, but with modifications to this building. And you can see that one of the things that we're looking to do is that we've, we've just used District Steakhouse here for the moment. There is a proposed tenant that would have a Chicklet logo besides their, their name logo on, on there, and that's part of what we're proposing. So this dark area here is this, these wings that are the, these canopies that we're looking to put over top of the, the outdoor seating area. So as you can see that we've talked about bringing things in, but the facade of the buildings actually remain where they were. We're just, we're just impeding on that with this blade that, that sticks out. So it's not really, it's not really, we're not bringing the building facade out to here. Building facade remains, we're just bringing this thin blade out, that's these airplane wings. And again, another.
So there are no columns to those can.
There'll be columns out here to support them, but they're, they're just smaller two columns. And then we still have the light poles out here in front of us. Yes.
And Mr. Peacock, the logo is the second sign for that business, correct?
That is correct.
And we're seeking variants?
That is correct. Yep. So these are just giving you an impression of how this woo nerf would work with, with the blades that kind of stick behind the trees there. I think I have a couple more views here just to accentuate what's going on. Kind of see a little bit closer up. We'll call this one A11. So as you can see, if you're, you know, standing on the, down here, that you're really, the building's back and there's this, there's just this thin line that is the canopy. And then right now, we're depicting this as a, as a, an open wall, but again, the tenant's going to work out what, how that barrier works so that they're compliant with the ABC for their, their liquor license. So this shows the east part of the building and there's a matching one onto the west side. And then this is just showing signage from Route 10 side. I have another view from Route 10 here in a second that shows that, you know, the way this building works, it's a two-sided building. We have the woo nerf side and then we have the Route 10 side. And so that it doesn't really have a back where all the trash goes out. It's, it's, it's a 360 building, so there's, I think a precedent there to have signage on, on both sides. So now we'll go, this is A12. And again, you can see from the Route 10 side, the same restaurant, Steakhouse Restaurant, which is, this is the east portion of the building. This is the breezeway going through and then we have the, the western part here. So you can kind of see from the Route 10 side that there's, there's a need to identify what, what's in here. If this were all blank, you wouldn't, you wouldn't really know what stores were, were in here from the highway. You'd have to come in to find out what's going on.
And Mr. Peacock, just so we can be clear about the variants we've related to this site, we are seeking one sign for business, but the size that we're proposing is larger than what the redevelopment plan permits, correct?
Correct.
But we are not going to exceed the 10-foot in length requirement, correct?
What's on the Route 10? Right. The same on both sides.
Yeah. So the, the size complies with what would be permitted on the woo nerf side?
Correct.
We're just proposing it on the backside.
Correct. And I believe it's based on the width of the, the space, the tenant space, not, not a 10-foot rule of.
It's a 10%, yes, 10% of the area.
Right.
On the facade, on that, part of the facade.
And then we do have doors on the Route 10 side, correct? But they're not the main entrances.
Correct.
To the businesses.
Right. Yep.
And so our redevelopment plan only allows signage to be over the main entrance into the retailer, restaurant spaces. So even though there's doors on the Route 10 side, that's not where you as a customer or a patron of the restaurant would go in.
Right.
So we need a variant for that condition as well.
We have, we have parking on the side, so some of these stores have doors here, but again, they have, they're two front-sided restaurants. The, the, the main, the two large restaurants have their doors on the woo nerf side, but these other stores have doors on, on both sides. Actual entrance and egress, egress doors. We'll call this one, we showed this one previously, but we'll call this one again. This is 13, A13. So this is a image that we had shown previously about how, how the space will, will kind of come off at nighttime. We have the cantonary lights that go across the woo nerf and you've got this, this whole pedestrian walk space and really looking to have a, a nice community space in the evenings. We do have residential up here, so I think part of that discussion earlier about restaurants and loud noises and things like that, that there's got to be some consideration from the ownership size of operations for these built, for these restaurants, given that we do have tenants that are literally 80 feet away. But as you can see, I think it's going to make a pretty spectacular community space and, and these, you know, all the, the different events that can potentially happen out there that is. One more exhibit here. Again, this was what we showed previously. We'll call this one 14. So this is looking back on building B and the woo nerf is off to the right here or below us and building C restaurant spaces are here off to the right. So the, the visual of the building for brick and finishes and, and how it's all laid out, we're playing off the same, same imagery and the same material, materiality that we're doing in building B will happen again on, on this building. So we have a lot of, a lot of the same, same materials, a little bit changed from where we were at originally, slight, slight changes in, in materials for the, for the restaurant, but they wanted a lighter, lighter brick for theirs. But basically, we're following what was projected and approved in 2021. And I guess, and part of it, what we've also done is that we've, we've done a nice play on the parapets that we didn't have so much up before. So we have, so these have come up, the restaurants have come up pretty, pretty, a little bit higher from where they were, which helps us block any of the equipment that's on the roof that will be stepped back towards the center for we have all the restaurant hoods and things like that that have to be on the roof set. But we have, I think, a nice play of, of up and down on the, on the tops of the parapet, so it's not just this flat space out there as, from Route 10, keeps that same kind of rhythm that's going on in building B and building A in the background.
And Mr. Peacock, as to the canopies, we're showing the maximum extent of the canopy to cover the entire outdoor area, correct?
The seating area, yes, yes.
And it's possible, we just don't know for sure yet, because we don't have final leases, that some of these tenants may want to have some of it uncovered, but we wanted to show the board what the maximum extent of the canopy would look like, because that would be the most impact on our woo nerf, woo nerf area. So we, we just don't know yet if some of them will want to shorten it because they may want some seats to be fully outside.
Correct.
Any questions by members of the board? Mr. Cantiano?
Mr. Sinekis? Just going over the trellises themselves, are they actually like trellises? You called them blades. Are they open to the air above? The shade canopies?
They're like airplane discs.
Okay.
They're, they're solid structures.
So they're solid structures?
They're just, you know, they're not like the, the whole building facade's not out, like the building facade's back, just these blades project out as sort of airport.
Okay. But they're impervious from the standpoint of coverage as far as that is concerned?
From the sky itself, yes.
So any of the drainage from that will be channeled to the stormwater system that's being proposed? I didn't know if there were open arrows.
We have, we have storm connecting and through the woo nerf.
Okay. But any downspouts?
Yeah, Eric Swores from Langen here again, the civil engineer. We've actually conservatively designed the stormwater system as if everything was impervious from the outer perimeter property curb line all the way in. Even though there is green area in there, from a stormwater calculation and conveyance point of view, we consider it 100% impervious.
Right, but any runoff from that can be collected in some way? Because it's sort of concentrated now, since it's a solid roof. That's what I was trying to get at.
Okay. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. So we're talking about the restaurant canopies here, correct? Yes, we're going to have some downspouts that are going to come down and we've already added, that was part of the revisions, a couple of minor under drainage pipes within the area with connections to grab those downspouts. Yes.
And, and the, the floor space under there also is connected to that? So if there's any side rain or whatever, that, that floor would also get to the tree?
Understood. With regard to the building-mounted signs that are facing Route 10, you're now asking for them to be in compliance with the area requirement for the woo nerf, right?
Correct.
And previously, as I understand it, and I'm sure your planner will cover this, is it was previously only for buildings that had entrances from that side, but also there was a reduced area as well for those signs. So you're now asking for the larger sign? I'm glad you showed exhibits. These are not the actual signs themselves, but sort of a depiction of what the signs may be. Do you have an area or a maximum size for a logo that you're asking for? Do you know what that might be at this point in time? It'd be good to have a dimension if you had an idea of what that might be. It would help the zoning officer. I'm not sure if she would be looking for that from that standpoint. Is it a four-by-four panel or is it something of that size?
Can't say that I know that off the top of my head. We have it on.
But the, the intent, Mr. Peacock, is that the total area of the logo and the words are not going to exceed the total of what's permitted for one wall sign?
Correct. It's just that we're going to have two instead of just one.
So for that 10% calculation, it wouldn't exceed that?
Correct. Yeah, so even though it's broken up into two signs because the logo is separate, the total overall area would comply with what the redevelopment plan permits us to have.
All right, and the second logo wouldn't exceed the roof height. It'd be placed in a proper location on the architecture.
Correct.
As far as that is concerned.
Would a tenant then have three signs? Because one on the Route 10, one on the inside, and Because one on the Route 10, one on the inside, and a logo making a tenant have three signs.
It might be four.
Or four.
Yeah.
If they want logo on both, so we're talking.
That's right. Yeah, they want logos on the inside, a second sign on the inside as well as on the outside.
Okay. It's already becoming very complicated to issue the signs that are already approved, as I've already been issuing the freestanding and the wall signs. It's already becoming difficult to know which ones have been approved, because they were on like a list, but they weren't described, you know, they were described like northwest, and you've already changed some of the square footages. So however we go forward in approving these, I mean, I'm not just thinking about six months from now, a year from now, I'm talking five years from now, when a tenant changes, how will me as one person trying to keep track of all the signage there, some kind of Excel spreadsheet, or some kind of, in the plans, a list that shows that all the signs that were approved and all the proposed, with some kind of, we had talked about maybe doing A1 for, if it was a building, A sign would be A1 through whatever, to have this chart also kind of broken down, because that way we can, as we issue the permits, keep track of them. It's just, it's a lot of signage for probably the most we've ever had.
Yeah, we can provide you with that Excel for that direction, just to make it a little easier for all that. The permit drawings for Building C, we actually have a graphic on the elevation, we have dotted line around an area to say, here's the permitted area of that sign, and then however they want to configure their signage within that box, if you will, that we provided.
I think it may be helpful too, and we can do this, if we have a diagram to go along with the chart, so that you can just cross-reference, you know, A1 and where is it on the diagram?
Yeah, that would be great.
That could be tied to the specific unit itself, maybe unit ABC or 123, whatever.
Right, we can certainly provide that.
Mr. Palatano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are these structures going to be enclosed?
They are not conditioned space. They're, they have payers for the floor, and they have just this blade, and then there's planters around the perimeter to contain the liquor license area.
So then do you need for outdoor heaters? I mean, you're only looking at about probably four or five months of, maybe six months outdoor dining. Is this going to be all your thing?
I can't speak to that operation.
Do they need propane heaters? Do you guys think about that? Propane heaters or outdoor heaters or things like that?
Well, we have gas in the building, so if it was, if it were, if they were going to have heaters, it would be definitely with natural gas.
Okay, and my other question is this loudspeaker, is it simply like, you know, DiPiero Party of Three? Your table's ready, or are we talking about club music at 10 o'clock? I mean, it's a huge difference, because I mean, you've got residents right across the street, right there, who are.
Right, that was my point earlier.
You know, dancing in their rooms, or they're yelling quiet, one or the other, so.
Right, I suspect it's not going to be a mosh pit kind of.
Yeah, you never know, outdoor area, you never know.
The council gets to decide that one.
What's that?
The council gets to decide that one. Any other questions by Mr. Dinech?
Thank you. Can we go back to A 11, quick? Yeah, so if you could give a quick, short testimony around, in case of an emergency or something like that, how would the people's flow would happen under that covered area?
All right, referencing this original plan. So the restaurant's main entrance is in here, we have egress provided on the backside for both of these, and then there's egress out of here, and there's, it's hard to see on this plan.
Yeah, so there's a fence out there, right? Kind of fence.
Right, but they're going to have, they will have a gate out of that space, because we need a second egress out of that space on both of those conditions.
So would the guests be able to get out on the all three sides, or just the one side will have that?
Right, I think we're just planning for a single, single gate to align with the door from inside, so from here out, so that they can.
And some of those requirements relate to what the ABC requires for liquor licenses, so it has to be a particularly secured area.
Okay.
So it has to be gated.
Okay, correct.
And we can't have, you know, gates at all points, there are particular requirements.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to note that if there is a future proposal to enclose the restaurant, the reserved dining areas, you would have to come back for additional approval or seek that from the town.
Yes, of course.
Okay, any members of the public have any questions to this witness on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Our next witness is our traffic engineer. He'll be providing testimony on the shared parking calculation and also the impact, or lack of impact to the traffic statement. That was.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Alan Lothian, A-L-A-N-L-O-T-H-I-A-N. The address is 1 University Square Boulevard, Princeton, New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Lothian, can you please provide your qualifications, background, and experience for the board?
I've been a traffic engineer with Langen for over 26 years. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers, a Master's of Science in Transportation from NJIT. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, have testified before dozens of boards, including this one.
We'd like to offer Mr. Lothian as an expert traffic engineer.
Any questions on the expert's qualifications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. So Mr. Lothian, if you can start with the shared parking for this proposed project?
Okay, I was going to start with the DOT update, but, so I'm hitting three different things. She mentioned two of them. One is, since we were last here, since we were last, since we were approved previously, DOT approved the final design of the Dryden Way connection, and if you've been around there, you would know that it is almost fully complete. It has been constructed, there's just a few minor things that they're completing. So that's the first thing. Second thing, I'll go into the shared parking. So as part of the redevelopment plan, one of the requirements is that we show that there is sufficient parking on site using the shared parking model. So with the shared parking model, what that looks at is the worst hour of the worst day of the worst week of the worst month of the year, which in this instance is 7:00 PM in December. And with that, with the new configuration of approximately, just under 4,000 square feet more of restaurant space, and I believe it's around 7,900 square feet less of retail space, the same number of residential units, the shared parking still comes out to less than the 1,062 spaces that are available on site and constructed on site. So we meet the intent of the redevelopment plan, we have sufficient parking on site. You want me to go into the trip gen?
Yes.
Okay. So we did not, we did not provide a revised traffic analysis, traffic study as part of this application, because actually the square footage of the shopping center area went down. So before it was 60,000 square feet, now it's slightly less. There was never a distinction of retail or restaurant space in the original, it's 60, it was 60,000 square feet of shopping center. Now, if you go back to the original approval of what was reviewed and approved by DOT for the shopping center space, it was actually 132,500 square feet. So what we did is, you know, when we came to you in 2021 for approval, we ran calculations on the latest trip, latest trip generation manual from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That was the 10th edition. The original calculations were done within the 9th edition. Now we're in the 11th edition. If I went through that exercise again, it would just show that we are less trips than what we were approved for in 2021. And I could provide those to Mr. Cantiano if he needs those.
I agree with that requirement, I mean.
No, I, again, I was just, that mention was just to address the comment that you had in your letter, and why we did not provide the traffic statement as part of this application.
So the trip generation is the same or less based on the different years? There's no increase in square footage, and there's no decrease in parking?
Yes. Well, we meet the, we meet the parking. We're less than what's provided, based on the shared parking.
That's all the direct testimony we have for this witness.
Any members of the board up? Mr. Cantiano, do you have anything? Just a minor housekeeping one, going back to the trash compactor that was, that was kind of reconfigured. I don't know if this is for the civil engineer or the traffic, but it's, it's the prior trash compactor that had a skewed angle for easy access for loading or unloading or for picking up the trash bins. This one is more perpendicular. Has there been any circulation testing done, truck maneuvering planned?
Yes, yes, there is. It is Plan CP 101, oh wait, that's fire trucks. The overall trucks move-in plan, CP 101 0103. It's sheet 32 of 88 in Plan 7.
Again, same, same thing with the cloud. If that was revised, show that, that that was the revised truck location. That's all I have. Any other members of the board have any questions? Mr. Mealy?
My question earlier about the operation of the restaurants, I know it's hard to determine what that might be, but do you have any idea? Hours?
I do not. I would just think they would be consistent with similar type of restaurants.
Breakfast, lunch, and perhaps supper?
I think another witness would be able to answer that question.
Yes, our applicant representative is here this evening, and he can answer our question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Sonekis?
Just one quick question. On the shared analysis that you did, did you take any EV credit?
We did not.
No, so it just shows you that it even works without the credit?
Yes, this is just the straight calculations.
All right, thank you.
Other members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public that have any questions on this witness on this time? This time. Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call Mark Potchman to answer the question on hours operation, and then we'll call our planner.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Sure, Mark Potchman, P-O-T-T-S-C-H-M-I-D-T. Partner with Stanberry Development, 2807 Delmar Drive, Beckslie, Ohio, 43209.
All right, thank you, thank you. Mr. Potchman, you heard the question relating to both hours of operation. I think it would also be helpful if we provide, to the extent we know, additional information on the seasonal use of the outdoors this business.
Sure. So the leasing effort is ongoing, and tonight's hopefully will be a big help to us to finish two important restaurant leases, who are looking for covered outdoor dining.
Can you please speak up a little?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, so the leasing is ongoing, and the two large restaurants, I guess I would say they'd be similar in hours of operation to Seasons 52 and Capital Grill. Not knowing exactly what those hours are, but 11 till 11, perhaps, with the focus on the dinner hour. I know our leasing partner is also trying to get a coffee bakery-type morning use. Don't have that one signed up yet, but we are targeting that. And I know as far as a quick serve, those are more focused on the lunchtime hours. So we're trying to target with all of our restaurants, different hours of the day, to kind of get the pedestrian activity, activate the Wunnerf throughout the, throughout the day. So I don't know if that's not a specific answer for you.
Thank you, Mr. Potchman. Thank you.
Yep, and then as far as the seasonal use, these tenants are looking to extend the outdoor dining as much as they can. My guess would be March to October, and they would likely have fans for the summertime and probably some gas heaters for the shorter seasons. But it does not have walls, as was testimony previously. It's to protect from the sun and the rain. So that's the seasonal aspect of the, and as far as the speakers go, it's really ambient noise for dining, where we would see to it, there's no club music going, going out. That wouldn't sit well with our residential tenants. So.
Thank you, Mr. Potchman.
Any questions of this witness? Any questions from the public of this witness? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. Our last witness this evening is Greg Woodruff, who is our planner.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Sure, thanks. Greg Woodruff, last name spelled W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F. The address is the same as Mr. Schwartz's, 300 Kimball Drive. I am with Langen Engineering as well, right here in Parsippany.
Mr. Woodruff, can you please provide your qualifications, your licenses, background, and experience?
Certainly. So I'm an associate principal with Langen, am currently a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as nationally with the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been a licensed planner since 2008, have appeared before dozens of boards throughout the state, including this one, been accepted as a professional planner for cases and applications just like this.
And your license is still current, correct?
Correct, yes.
We'd like to offer Mr. Woodruff as a professional planner.
Any questions on the expert's qualifications? Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Woodruff, if you can just recap the existing conditions, what we're proposing, and then the variance relief.
Certainly, I won't go into a great bit of detail about the existing conditions. I think the board is very familiar with the project, with the area. I think what I would mention from a planning perspective, and I think it's been said by many members of the board, the professionals, there's quite a bit of history and intentionality to the design, the redevelopment plan, what was included here, and I think what's being requested, even though there are deviations from a planning, a technical planning perspective, is very much in keeping with the original planning intent, which was a pedestrian-oriented Wunnerf-activated space that really captures the best of what a mixed-use development could be with the residence and also the retail and commercial space immediately adjacent, not oriented toward Route 10. So, you know, I think all of that is still being maintained from a planning perspective, even though there are some technical deviations that we've discussed at length, and I'll go through some planning justifications for.
I think we can jump in first to the variance related to the Wunnerf area and the open space that we're providing in that area.
Certainly. So talking specifically about that, from a, from a planning perspective, I think this certainly fits within what would classically be described as the C2 criteria, whereby the benefit outweighs any detriment or perceived detriment from a, from a planning or just, you know, from a planning justification perspective. In this case, you heard quite a bit of testimony and saw quite a bit of imagery relative to what's being proposed from a structure perspective. The plan always contemplated temporary structures in this area. There's just a little more permanent nature to them now that shortens that dimension in specific areas. But there is still that larger overall complying area that's being provided, it's just not the contiguous length that was mentioned. The overall length, the overall area still complies, it's just that contiguous nature that gets broken up by these structures. However, the structures do serve a purpose from a planning perspective within the space to activate the area. So in my opinion, from a planning perspective, that benefit outweighs any perceived detriment and in totality, with the intention of that area of the Wunnerf, that area is still provided, that activity will still take place from a planning perspective.
Thank you. And then if we can jump to signage, there are several variances related to signage, so if we can summarize them, just take them one at a time, and then the justifications for the relief.
Certainly. So obviously, we heard requests for the number of signs, as well as the overall area. Obviously, from a planning perspective, I would, I Obviously, from a planning perspective, I typically characterize signage, the intention of the signage is to notify, whether it be pedestrians, vehicles, whatever it might be, about the location of the business. Again, the unique aspect of this development is it fronts on Route 10. It wants to draw people from Route 10, but it really is oriented to the internal woo-nurf. So, it creates a little bit of a unique characteristic in that way, I think, in terms of how the signage is contemplated. So, relative to the signs on the rear of the building, I think from a planning perspective, there is clearly that benefit that drivers on Route 10 would be notified and alerted to the location of those businesses and hopefully drawn within the mixed-use complex through those signs. The inclusion of logos in addition to the actual name of the business from a planning perspective, and I think this is true for the signs being on the rear of the building as well, from a planning perspective, I think, you know, the visuals that have been discussed, the dimensions, even though we don't have specific logos or specific names yet, the intention is to comply with the overall size. It's really just to provide that overall notification on both sides. And the logos should add, from my perspective, greater recognition, brand recognition for those businesses that will hopefully make them successful because at the end of the day, if the businesses are successful, the woo-nurf will be successful, the overall development will be successful, and that's what everybody wants. So, in my opinion, from a planning perspective, what's being requested relative to the deviations for the signage, again, is in keeping with what the intention was. Have it pedestrian-oriented, draw people from 10 into the site while still being aesthetically pleasing, which I think is obviously the applicant's goal because they want an aesthetically pleasing site as well. It benefits them if it looks nice. That's what tenants are going to require, that's what patrons are going to require. And I think what's being asked for from a signage perspective is in keeping with all of those goals, will provide those benefits. And all of that outweighs any perceived detriment of like the numbers not matching exactly what was contemplated a while ago before tenants were fully contemplated as they are being now.
Mr. Woodruff, just for the record, so that we can... I know you did an excellent summary of both the purposes of zoning and the positive and negative criteria. Can you just identify the purposes of zoning that are advanced?
Certainly. I'll highlight two, again, in the interest of not going through a million. I think there are two that are specifically relevant. The first would be Purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses according to environmental requirements to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens, right out of the MLU. So, obviously, what we're asking for supports what is a currently permitted mixed-use development and what's being requested, I think, will add to attracting customers and the overall health and vibrance of what is an existing permitted mixed-use development in that area. So, clearly supporting Purpose G. And the second would be Purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Obviously, you know, this project is a pretty unique example of getting to plan a large mixed-use site. The incorporation of the woo-nurf, what I would refer to as enhancements, just further that goal of what was originally started with the original design.
Thank you. And as to the negative criteria, you had already summarized the impact on the public good. If we can just be specific about the impact of the redevelopment plan for the record?
Certainly. So, obviously, from my perspective, there's no substantial impact to the public good, no substantial impact or impairment to the redevelopment plan in this case. I would highlight two specific goals within the redevelopment plan that I think what's being asked for here this evening further supports. The first is Goal 2, which states to promote a planned mixed-use retail/commercial/residential development that creates a distinct sense of place, is pedestrian-oriented, and enhances the greater community character. I think I've already talked at length about sort of my belief from a planning perspective as to how what's being asked for is clearly in line with those original goals. I don't think the structures being permanent versus the original thought of them being temporary changes furthering that goal at all. And similarly with what's being requested for the sign deviations, again, still with that goal in mind, furthering that goal. And the second is Goal 3, to quote, "promote a high-quality architectural and landscape design integrated throughout the proposed development of the tract. Such a development pattern shall be oriented around a centralized pedestrian main street to promote a sense of place and gathering area for the center." Again, none of that is changing. All of what's being requested, the deviations, continue to try to further that goal through just slight design needs in specific ways.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff. That's all we have for this witness on direct testimony.
Any members of the board have questions of this witness? Mr. Sinekas, do you have any?
Just one follow-up question. The original intent to put a reduced area on the back of the building was, from a planning perspective, to try to funnel people more towards the woo-nurf area as the entrance and not necessarily dress it up as the front of the building. From a planning perspective, now seeing the evolution of the design, this seems to create a better alternative from the standpoint of just how the building looks. The building looks more active by having more signage on that side, but yet it's still in balance with the overall percentage?
I would agree, yes. If you're asking me if I agree, yes, I would agree with that, yes.
Okay. And this is just for Building C, is that correct?
Correct.
So, you're not asking for any changes to Building B?
Correct.
Correct.
So, there's only going to be logos on this building on either side of the building? Okay. But just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Other members of the board, professionals, have any questions on this testimony?
I just wanted to clarify, the variant or deviations you're looking for is for the width of the setback or between Building C and Building B?
Correct.
And then?
At its narrowest.
At its narrowest. And then the number of signs on the woo-nurf side? Or is that just the area of the sign?
It's the number of signs on the woo-nurf side and the Route 10 side.
And the Route 10 side?
Of Building C.
Right, of Building C only.
Of Building C only.
Okay. Just to clarify, the applicant confirmed the request would be to possibly have the logos on Building B as well.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Well, there's retail there, so.
Right. So, your testimony is also applied to Building B?
Correct, yes.
Which I don't have a problem with. I think it still makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions by members of the board of this testimony and the planner's testimony? Any members of the public have any questions of the planner's testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So, that's your case?
Yes, that's all we have for our witness testimony. We would just like to thank the board for their time this evening. And just, I mean, very briefly, we know that these are modifications to the overall plan that was originally approved in 2021, but we do believe that they are enhancements, not only from an aesthetic perspective, but also the functionality of the center and hopefully just creating this true sense of community, which the woo-nurf will be able to do. And we want to make sure that it is a successful site. We're really proud of it and the construction that's been going on so far. And we think that these modifications that we presented this evening will allow us to make sure that it's as successful as it can be.
Are there any members of the public who have any objections to this application or want to speak in favor of this application? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there any desire for a discussion or should we... Mr. DiPiero, you have a...
I have a question. There was some brief discussion at the beginning of the meeting about taxes, which I was not privy to. Did that include land tax discussions?
So, the discussion was that we were uncertain if the property owners had any outstanding tax bill with the town. They confirmed they're up to date with their tax payments, but they also have filed a tax appeal in state tax court to challenge the assessment on the property. That's separate from what we are dealing with here, with the outstanding taxes requirement as a part of completeness.
So, that really doesn't answer my question. Was that addressing land tax or something else?
Yes, the land property taxes.
The land property taxes on appeal?
Yes.
So, then it's not appropriate to discuss it now? Or is it?
It would not be relevant to the board's hearing of this application.
They stated on the record that all of their taxes are current and up to date with the town.
But they have not been paying a land tax, so that cannot be current or up to date. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
I think right now, since the property is under construction, there's no assessed value for the land or for the improvements.
All right, let me explain something. This was our first pilot project in Parsippany. That's payment in lieu of taxes. All of the other pilots we've had in the township under the Barbarian administration has required the developer pay the land tax. The land tax has been fair because the school board gets its fair share of the land tax as a part of their income. This is the only pilot that is not paying a land tax. And it's my opinion that while we're granting approvals all the time, why can't we be requesting something as well? I mean, this is the only pilot we have that does not pay a land tax in Parsippany. Doesn't seem fair.
Yep, I understand now. So, the pilot and the financial agreement entered between the redeveloper and the township is between the township council and the redeveloper. The board doesn't have any say over the terms of that agreement. And it might be the case that, in this instance, the pilot doesn't include a land payment, but that's between the township council and the redeveloper, not the board, unfortunately.
The only problem I have with that is the applicant comes before us looking to change the agreement. And if they can change the agreement, why can't we?
So, the redevelopment agreement or the redevelopment plan was already amended and approved by the township council. Right now, we're reviewing the site plan approval, which is required under the redevelopment law. The redevelopment agreement and any financial agreement is handled directly with the township, not with the board.
Okay.
So, I wasn't a mayor when this was negotiated. And I think what Councilman, no, excuse me, my Councilman, the former Councilman, was saying is the fact that I wasn't in the meetings with previous meetings that we had several months ago. And I understand what you're saying, but it's the township, and I'm speaking on part of the administration. I'm frustrated, I'm not going to lie to you, with regards to land tax. I didn't make this agreement and I would have never made that type of an agreement with regards to land tax being exempt from a pilot. With regards to the pilot, I think all applicants should be paying land tax based figuring that the only portion that's conventional tax for the schools is the land tax. Why on earth a former administration would exempt land tax from an application? It's just mind-boggling to me because I know I wouldn't have done that. I wasn't in the meetings. I know there was meetings with Stanbury and with the administration with regards to this situation. And now, I don't know, I just did have the conversation this morning, that this application really shouldn't have been on until there was settlement with the township that we're hearing tonight. And I think that's what the former Councilman's saying. So, when I saw this application on this morning, I was kind of surprised to see in their permanent outdoor dining because, as I said, I wasn't in the meeting. This should not have been heard until there was this further discussion with the township and with whoever negotiated with Stanbury, I wasn't in the meeting. So, I think that's what he's saying. But you're saying that this applicant tonight, this application tonight, is not contingent on that? As you're right, you're correct that the government body decides when it comes to pilots, when it comes to the taxes. But where's that put us if we approve this tonight?
So, the requirement for planning board applications is that the applicant certify that they're current with their current tax bills. And on the record, we have, the applicants provided that they met that requirement and that's as far as the board can go with respect to making sure that tax payments are made. Any negotiation regarding pilot payments would have to be...
This is going to be more candid and blunt. I think that's really have to be. When I'm being told that an application should not be on here until we have an agreement on taxes, that's what I expect. And that is not what I see tonight. And that's what frustrates me. I know this has been going on a while with regards to it, but the township has to take a stance when it comes to collecting taxes in my opinion on a proper pilot procedure. Now, as the mayor, I'm obligated not just to the taxpayers. I'm also obligated, I don't know if anybody's been watching what's going on in the town between the school board and the township and pilots, that I'm pretty friggin frustrated. When I saw this on here, I was frustrated with Stanbury. I was frustrated with the fact that I don't get contacted with regards to what's going on with the agreement or if there was going to be an agreement. That's what frustrates me. I'm being told tonight and the rest of the board that we have to separate this and either grant or not grant an approval. Now, if we don't grant an approval based on the mere fact of the pilot, we could be in violation. Okay? So, in the future, I would appreciate the board, the attorney, or anybody to contact my office when an application like this comes on when we are negotiating and discussing taxes being paid to the township in a proper manner. Now, I wasn't, like I said, the mayor prior and whoever the attorney was that was doing this, I would have never allowed it. But now I got to live with it. And the township has to live with it. I think that's what the former Councilman's saying. So, I know the applicant's here tonight. I don't know if he wants to discuss this tonight with regards to this and regards to the back and forth that's been going on between the tax assessor and Stanbury. But this should not have been on tonight. That's just my opinion. And if I knew it was going to be on prior, I was kind of confused, I'm not going to lie to you, when I just thought it was just going to be a simple C variance to discuss. That's not what's happened tonight. We went full-blown tonight with regards to this. How do I move forward now, tonight? Because if we grant this approval, then we have no leg to stand on the township. And I know I have to limit my comments because, you know, there's certain things, and I know how pilots work. I don't think anybody in this room knows how pilots work better than I do. Because I took, I got my head handed to me because I believe in doing certain things to lift our economy up, to help other, you know, because I know, you know, with the way things are with COVID, with everything post-COVID, things are difficult. Supply and demand's up, all that. Interest rates are up. I get all that. And we want to bring these companies here and we want to bring a project that's here. But I think that, and I'm sure you didn't, I don't know if you knew about it prior, but, you know, the fact of the matter is that, is there any way to vote a contingent on settlement or anything like that?
I might just ask the chairman if we could just go into a brief recess so I could speak with the applicant's attorney, just for...
Sure.
All right.
This board is recessed.
This and you do this. I am negotiating, I will be negotiating on behalf of the township. Whatever you say to them, I don't want to be strapped or my hands tied behind my back. That's what I don't want. So, I will step out of this room if I have to. If you're going to have a personal back and foot... If you're going to have personal back and forth with them, or are we going to do it in the open public?
I'd just like a recess, I can speak with you.
Yes, I think it's important you do.
Have a motion to recess for...
Make a motion.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Tape on.
Yep.
All right, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Here.
DiPiero.
Here.
Present. Here.
Yes.
Here. Dingmore.
Here. All right. We've reconvened. We've had some discussions. I'm going to ask you to leave with the discussion.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We would like to carry the application to the board's next meeting in two weeks on October 21st and are hopeful that within that time period, we'd like to be able to schedule a meeting with the township so that we can discuss the tax appeal, even though it's unrelated to the planning board's jurisdiction and the offer that was previously submitted by tax council related to that.
All right. So, we have a request by the applicant to adjourn the meeting till the 21st. Do I have a...
I'll make a motion, but do we also need to extend their application?
If there are any tolling of time, you'll grant us any tolling of time required?
To the extent that, yes, correct. To the extent that the approval period expires in the next two weeks, we agree to an extension of time for that.
Before you make a motion, can I get an idea of how much time? Because I have other things scheduled for that evening.
So, we don't anticipate having any more expert testimony. Our expert testimony relates to the application that is before the planning board is completed.
You don't want to add the banners on?
We could. Sure. So, I think at most, we would need 30 minutes.
Don't want to forget about that.
Please do contact our township attorney?
Yes.
Assessor and business administrator.
Okay. Would you like us to contact the tax attorney as well?
Huh?
The tax attorney as well?
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to say tax attorney.
Well, contact both, the township and town.
All right. So, I...
I made a motion. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mache.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else that needs to come before the board tonight?
No.
A motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion.
Anybody opposed?